Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the April 3, 2024 Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting. Our meeting start time is 6:02. Dana, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Randi Cankins?
Here.
Ed Cupids?
Here.
Mike Tremblay?
Here.
Mandy Barnett?
Here.
Anne Marie Boyce?
Here.
He's excused. So for the folks here and the folks that will watch the video later, we now have a quorum. But before we start the business part of the meeting, I'm going to ask that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public business meeting of the Planning Commission, and we do from time to time give an opportunity for public comments at various points in our agenda. So we normally have everyone sign in sheet on the side in case we have a need to call someone afterwards. We have a record of it. The Commission is made up of seven Bruce Township citizens. We have one absent tonight for his employment. Dana Buchanan, to my left, will assist us with the recording of the meeting minutes. She participates in our discussion as well as a former Planning Commissioner. She often has historical references and is able to help us along the way. Joe Tangeri, to my far right, is a professional planner with Giffords Webster, and he also is an advisor to the work that we do. There are opportunities normally on our agenda for public questions and comments, and generally we ask people to keep that to about three minutes. And you'll be granted more time. Typically, if we have a lot of people, it's harder to grant. If you need additional time and you're going to speak, we can do that. When you move to the podium, you need to state your name and address for our record. And we ask that you address your comments to the Commissioners in front of you. And if we have a full house, then sometimes it gets out of hand, and we try to keep everything here. Follow these guidelines, and we'll make the best use of our time. And on behalf of all the Commissioners, we appreciate your participation. And if anyone watches this on the YouTube video, they'll see the same intro, and they can make contact with us after meeting needed. So a long-winded intro, but here we go. Item number four is the review of the minutes from the prior meeting. Commission, any comments? Hearing none. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as received by us this evening.
A second.
I have one question on the minutes.
Okay.
Do we normally put who's absent when we do the roll call?
Yes.
It's not on there. If you could just add that for each of the motions.
Oh, for each motion?
Yeah. I think that's what they do for the township minutes, too.
Yeah, I've seen it. I've seen it both. I've heard people say yes, I know that consensus prefer to include the absent person on each.
Yeah, it covers it if someone comes in late, and they might be part of the later motions, but they're absent for the initial.
Yeah. That's the only comment I have.
Okay.
See, it's a motion as amended.
So make the motion. I'll modify my motion to amend it to include the commentary we just had of including the name of the absent individual or individuals. Second on that motion. Randy is seconding the motion. Okay, for the, I guess, the benefit of folks in the audience and people that will watch this later, our Commissioner, his chairman, is traveling for work, and so I'm the vice chairman, so I'll be running the meeting tonight. Jared would typically be doing that.
Hold on a moment.
Yes. Vote on that motion to approve the minutes. Do we do that?
Well, he usually does it all in favor, but I'll.
Okay. You okay with all in favor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Thank you, Dana. Okay, and we had the approval of the agenda. Item number six deals with public comment.
Really?
I'm sorry?
Five.
Okay.
I think we have one addition, new business, correct?
Yeah, we have to amend the agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
I think we were gonna.
Add your new business.
New business, some discussion around.
Old.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Unanimous.
Anne Marie.
All right, I'm going to move to item number seven. It's the first place where I don't have comments, so I should get this one right.
You gotta do six.
Six, public comment. That's correct. Not off to a good start, folks. All right. Number six. I do have a check mark there. So anyway, public comment. This is a time when you folks in the audience, if you want to come up and address any item that might not be on our agenda, feel free to do so. Typically, people may have questions, or they may have clarification they need to have, and we open it up and give them three minutes. Do you have a need to do that, or are you here for, okay, you're here for an agenda item? Okay. All right, item number seven typically is public hearings. We have no public hearings, so I'm gonna move on to looking at item number eight. I do not recall getting anything specifically on a review. Joe?
So we're gonna move on to item number nine, which is communications. Anyone have communications item that they want to throw out there and discuss?
Unfinished business. Rizzo renewed site plan for parcel 14-01-36-126-004. Joe, I think you have something on that.
Well, kind of a short comment to basically explain what we're doing with these items A and B tonight. So these are items whose site plan approval has lapsed due to the passage of time, and neither plan has been changed at all, but both would like to move forward, and the supervisor requested that we place these on the agenda for, it's not really so much an extension of the approval because the approval has lapsed, it's more of a reaffirmation of the original approval. And that would include any conditions of the original approval as well. And that applies to both 10A and 10B on your agenda.
Joe, I have a question for you. In addition to a reaffirmation, could we extend the site plan approval for an additional period of time that we could state in a motion?
Kind of a preemptive extension, is what you're saying?
Well, because they both expired.
Right, yeah.
And normally, the normal course of business was that the developer would come in and ask for an extension.
Right.
But they were never notified they were expiring. So out of courtesy, Mike asked us if we could.
Sure.
Remind the agenda to extend them.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I think that reaffirming the approval of the site plan would automatically grant a year, because you're essentially granting approval again. So if you'd like it to be longer than that, you can state that. But I think you've got a year by default.
Okay.
So you cannot.
I would like, I would like that stated, though, specifically in the minutes.
Sure, yep.
And you cannot actually reduce it, because they've had a bunch of time already.
They have. Yeah, okay. Some of this was kind of the middle of COVID stuff, too.
Yeah, pandemic-related, I think.
And then we lost kind of a practice we had had before notifying the developer, which we didn't. I don't think we did it.
Not on Rizzo.
Yeah. What we should do in the future is if someone's within 60 days of their expiration, and I think later in the agenda we're going to talk about extending that time period because engineering reviews are taking so long these days.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the Rizzo site plan for parcel 1401-36-126-004 for an additional year.
And I'll second that motion. And we still have to do a roll call on all of the, correct?
Yep.
Dana, when you're ready.
Yep. Anne Marie, Boyce?
Yes.
Mike Tremblay?
Yes.
Mandy Barnett?
Yes.
Randi Cankins?
Yes.
Randi Cankins?
Yes.
Jared?
Can I take back my motion? I wanted to, I wanted to add something to that, because I would, I would say the environment hasn't materially changed since the original approval.
Oh, sure, yeah. As a matter of rationale, I think you can add that to the motion.
Yeah.
That's fine. If everyone agrees.
I'd like to adjust the motion. That's, for the reason is that that area of the township hasn't materially changed since the original approval.
So long as all the folks who voted for the motion agree with that.
Yeah.
So when you seconded it. I seconded it. Everybody seconded it again.
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, item B, Aragona?
Same as before. They simply are more than a year past their approval, and I know they've been going through engineering review and moving forward pretty diligently, but they're just outside their one-year period. And they also are kind of seeking the same reapproval that the previous one was. Again, no changes.
Any thoughts, questions for Joe? Any wish to make the same motion?
I'll make the motion that we renew the site plan for Aragona parcel 1401-25300028.
Second the motion.
Can I suggest a modification?
For 12 months?
For 12 months. And then add the rationale. Because of the rule changes?
No, there hasn't been a material.
Well, there hasn't been any material change in the, in the area.
And I'll second that change as well. Okay. Need to do a roll call for that? Or Dana?
Tremblay?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Cankins?
Yes.
Cankins?
Yes.
Okay, Joe. Item C, Walker request for parcel 1401-Vandijk.
Okay, so this is something that has not yet been approved, is on the table still. It's, it's been postponed, final decision on this requested rezoning on that vacant parcel on Vandijk. And they were given a specific time period in which to return to the Planning Commission. Tonight is the end of that time period. They are not ready to return yet and are requesting a continuation of the case. Basically, they would like to be postponed again, and they, Dana, correct me if I'm wrong, but they did not specifically request a certain amount of time, did they?
They, they requested until July.
Until July, okay.
This was a verbal request?
This was in, I think it was in an email between them and Mike Filbrick.
Can I make a comment? This is the second time. They were already tabled last December.
That's correct.
Came in. We agreed to table it with the idea of setting up the subcommittee until February 1. Didn't pursue the subcommittee, but he wanted more time, I guess, to review his, what his intent was for the acres, as I understand it. He asked for six months when we had our meeting in February, and my recollection of the discussion was that we thought that just 60 days was appropriate. So now it's 60 days, and they're asking again.
Mike, are you aware of additional conversation?
Yeah. Mike Filbrick had some conversation with the owner, and he was thinking about just dropping the whole thing and just selling the property. And I had a follow-up conversation with him, wanted to find out what it was about, and it had to do with current lending costs and current material costs. So I, him and I had discussed it, and he said, I said, "How much time do you need?" And he said, "About six months." I thought that was appropriate, because if he just goes ahead and sells it, you don't know where you're gonna get there." And I think it was promising, maybe, and they did, they did have a subcommittee, and they had one meeting, I believe. I'm aware that he had. No.
No.
We talked about that last night. That was, the subcommittee was with.
With the neighbors.
Neighbors across, a fellow, as I recall, across the street of Vandijk, and two or three from behind.
Right.
And you were on that subcommittee.
Well, it was discussed here.
Didn't happen.
Yeah.
Right, it was canceled.
Right. I personally would like to see an extension through July, as requested, for the reasons given by the owner.
Are there terms on that extension to July? Are we saying that this is the last extension and.
We could.
A re, a re-application will be necessary if they don't return by July?
Yeah.
I think that would be unreasonable.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this, the Walker parcel 14-01-14-300-010. I think it was a conditional, we're talking about conditional rezoning, to be extended through July 24, and this would be the final tabling. And that if the, if there's not a resolution, then we would vote on the, the application in July.
Your date of July 24?
No, not July 24, July, the July Planning Commission meeting.
It's the 24th.
It's the 3rd.
Why don't we make it August? August. So it gives them the whole, the July. I would say August, at the August Planning Commission meeting.
It'll be August 7.
Okay, we can have a second.
I've got a question here. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to include it in the motion. But, yeah, we attempted to have the subcommittee previously, and then they were gracious, they did call and cancel. But if possible, I'd like to see that be their responsibility to communicate with the office, to provide their availability, if they're interested. Like I said, their best interest to participate with a subcommittee. I'm still willing to do it. Anne Marie, are you still willing?
I wasn't in it.
Oh, you weren't?
It was Randy.
Randy was in, and then who else was part of it?
Just you. I believe it was just the two of you.
Okay, all right. You still?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that a change to the motion you suggested?
Mike, there's just, comment good enough.
I'd like to leave my motion the way it is.
Okay, so it'd be another motion?
And it's, and it's up to him if he wants to be proactive in that subcommittee, because if he comes back with conditions that the subcommittee hasn't reviewed, it might, it might be disadvantage. But he has to come back in August as the last.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a drop dead, but.
I'd leave it up to the, to the developer.
Okay, so.
I'll reach out to him.
I'm sorry?
I'll send a letter and.
Okay, what's ever easiest for you?
Just tell them the Planning Commission would like to see them resurrect the subcommittee to discuss that. But I don't want it as part of the motion.
Yeah, if they're willing to provide something in writing in advance what their initial recommendations are.
No, are you talking like right before the August meeting, or are you talking like within the next month or two?
At their convenience. I mean, not letting it go right up until August, I think, is in their best interest, you know?
I think as a board, we've been gracious with them as far as helping them along with this, but it seems like they've been kicking the can down the road.
Yeah.
And not in good faith, especially after meeting with the neighbors, and then coming back and not following through with what they had originally discussed.
So what's your recommendation, Randy?
Well, I would, we can vote on the motion.
I'm gonna add a comment, I can't. I don't know what the harm is. It's their land. They don't do anything. It's, and to eventually come up, and they won't be able to do what they've said. Is this penalizing someone because they didn't follow up on it?
No, I mean, you could look at it that way, but I think more from a positive perspective is, we originally had made an offer to help. So they don't have to take advantage of that offer. I'm not sure how productive it would be, but, you know, at the time, it appeared like it was a courteous thing to do. There's, especially because there are people that live nearby that have got opposing views. So.
Let me put it, I'm gonna try to put some perspective on this from the owner's perspective. Because from a business standpoint, it doesn't look like it's, it's a doable concern at the current time. But if financing changes and material changes, it might be a viable option. I think it would behoove us to leave that as a viable option, not for some unlimited time, until August. And if he chooses to have a subcommittee, he can. If things don't change, he may not want to do the subcommittee, but just accept that he'll just take our, whatever we vote to do.
Okay.
So it's time for the.
He's in the driver's seat, yeah. And then, and when it comes August, we're in the driver's seat.
Or if it gets to a point where things in the country change, and it's more conducive to moving forward.
Right.
Then he's got to come back, but that's what we're telling him.
I mean, what he explained to me was they were business reasons, economic reasons, and I understood it. So I was okay with, personally, I was okay with extending it for some limited amount of time.
Okay, so you're recommending your motion stay as is?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And I don't think, sorry, let's finish up with your motion.
We had a motion by Tremblay, and it was seconded.
Did you understand the motion?
I just, can you repeat the motion now?
Yeah, the motion was to table this to the August Planning Commission meeting, and this would be the absolute last tabling of this issue. And come August, whatever the developer has, either from the subcommittee or from his own, would be, would be presented at that meeting or before, and then we would vote on the August meeting.
And then if they wanted to do it again, they'd have to.
They'd have to reapply.
Reapply, right. Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Tremblay, seconded by Mandy.
Boyce?
No.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Cankins?
Yes.
Cankins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, going back to what I just brought up about the offer to help, Joe, we don't need a motion for that, do we? Okay, all right.
It's already been.
No, Dana's gonna make a phone call.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Email or something.
Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me. Moving on.
Randy. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was just making sure that Randy was still available to do the.
Okay, moving on to item D. Back to Joe.
Okay. Fair amount more to say about this one. So we've been discussing our industrial districts and the uses permitted therein for the last several meetings, kind of working our way toward a cleaned up list of permitted and special land uses, some further definition of the. and special land uses, some further definition of the terms in our ordinance, refinement of the intent statements, and ultimately, the combination of the IRO and PI districts, which are extremely similar in a lot of ways, and neither of which has ever really gotten any traction in the past. So, it's all kind of laid out here. A couple of new things have appeared in the memo. If you look down on page, so on page six, starting on page six, the supplemental district standards have been fully edited, and some of them are just eliminated because they're redundant to other standards of our ordinance. There are some notes in there explaining some of that. And then on page eight, the M1 district regulations, we have a new outdoor storage regulation that we can refer to now, rather than having separate language here. And then I also went through our ordinance, so at the bottom of page nine, you can see a list of all the places where if we take the PI district and folded it together with the IRO district under the IRO name, these are all the places where you would have to make a modification elsewhere in the ordinance, either by removing a reference to the PI district, or deleting something to combine it with another section, as is the case in those first two items. There aren't a ton of references to the, to the PI district, but there are enough that we got to call them all out and make sure that we don't lose any of them, so that we don't have a phantom reference to a district that doesn't exist anymore. And then all the defined terms, newly defined terms, are at the bottom of the memo. And if there are any comments, questions, et cetera, on any portion of the memo, I am more than happy to address them. Question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Joe, on page six, in the middle, recommended new standards for the IRO. I've forgotten, and you may have explained this last month, why did we remove the total 100 feet on the side setback? It's about halfway down?
Yeah, right, that was part of our conversation last time.
Is that a combined setback, Joe?
Yeah, so it's basically, the way it's written in the current table is that the smallest side can be 25 feet, but the total of the two has to be 100. So if you had 25 on one side, you'd-
75 on the other side.
Yeah. And, without going back to my notes, I'm not sure I can, I want to make sure that I get it right here.
Can we do something to potentially make that clearer towards what you just stated? Even if you got to do a footnote?
Well, it says minimum lot width is 100, and then if your total setback is 100, that means you can't build anything.
That's true, yes. I think that might be part of what we were looking at there.
Yeah, my, my suggestion was to make the minimum lot width 150 feet. 100 feet's very narrow.
Yeah, we could do 152, and between that and the other one, you'll have plenty of area to build in. Yes, I think, um-
So that's going to change to 150? It was 150 above, and then?
Yeah, the PI had 100, and the IRO had 150, and so we'll just go with the IRO standard. Let me save one thing real quick.
I have a question, Joe, on the current standards for P1. 100-foot minimum width with side setbacks at 75, does that even make sense?
It doesn't really, it's, it's, you can't really get that lot size with-
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
With those setbacks, so.
All right.
Yeah, go, go ahead and continue, please.
Over on item D, at the top of page seven, and this may be another thing that we spounded upon last month, we talk about the loading areas, the part you underlined, minimum of 10 feet, and then minimum of 50 feet from the lot line with the adjacent property as any other zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
Is, did we talk about that 50?
We talked about, so, we talked about the fact that the district is requiring all loading and unloading activities to be confined inside the building, and-
I remember that.
We wanted to let some of it happen outside.
Yes.
As far as the 50 feet was concerned, in my notes, I don't have a, a final number that we settled on, so that was a number that I was throwing out there as a proposal, and the planning commission can kind of-
So if, case in point, is the homestead. So if we weren't working, if it wasn't an instance where the developer had agreed to work with the township to come up with something, under this standard, their, their loading area could be only 50 feet from the residential.
Yeah, that's correct. So you've got a 75-foot setback for the building from residential, and then within, you know, 25 feet of the building, you can do other activities such as loading, yeah.
That, that's difficult. It's close, but, I mean, you're kind of constrained by the 75 feet as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's still 50 feet from the property line. You should be able to put some decent buffering and things in, in between, in a 50-foot-
That's only where it's zoned M1 or IRO, right?
No, that's 10 feet.
Yeah, if, if you've got another industrial lot next door, you can be 10 feet from line with your loading, because you've just got another industrial user there, it doesn't really matter that much. They're probably going to be doing the same thing.
And being close to residential, if there were a nuisance complaint for noise, that would apply, correct?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I, I had the same concern as you did on that one, but I'm okay with Joe's explanation.
Okay. The rest are, see how you've got M1 there, Joe, in that sentence we're looking at?
Okay, sure.
And then go to the next page, at the bottom of page eight, where you actually come up with the M1 district regulations.
Mm-hmm.
I think we decided at the meeting in, I think it was December, we talked about, and maybe we want to change again, but I think we talked about changing the name of M1. I, and my note said LI1, as in light industrial.
Yeah, we were definitely changing the name to light industrial, which I think I've got captured, it's captured above. Yeah, I think I just didn't do it there. Do we want to, do we, we still want to do that, to go to LI, LI1 as the acronym for it, rather than M1?
I think it's more descriptive.
Just need to make sure we catch it every-
I come from a contract standpoint, so it doesn't matter what you call it, it's how you define it, so I'm okay with M1, personally.
Sure. I mean, I guess the, the main thing that, that affects if we change it to LI1 is that we got to make sure we hunt down every instance in the ordinance of M1.
Yeah, from a content standpoint, leaving it in M1 doesn't hurt, as long as you define it correctly.
Right, right.
Right, which is why I, I raised it.
Mm-hmm. I think it's probably simpler to keep it as M1. We can call it light industrial, and that's a descriptive name for the, for the district, but the, the M1 shorthand for it can remain, without causing any issues, and we won't have to track all the instances down and make sure that we change them all.
The last comments I had were on the other ordinance sections being affected, and this might be something that's just, you would capture when you get to put pencil to paper, but we have to change the table of contents, all the matrices?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. Those are automated in the document, so when we change it-
Yeah, zoning map, I think we have maybe one section that was the PI something?
Yes, and I'll change to IRO.
Uh-huh. And then for some reason, I put the first two pages of Article III. I can't remember what it was, but it was something like that.
Yeah, because all the districts are listed on the first two pages of Article III.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And that, that's also automated in the document, so if you change it there, it changes everywhere else it's referred to.
Okay.
But, yes, we will definitely make sure that it gets-
Okay, those were mine.
If you think Anne Marie has some, I got more.
That's what we're here for.
The new combined statement?
Mm-hmm.
Third line down at the very end, it says light manufacturing. I think we should remove that. That's not the intent of this district, just to have light manufacturing, you got light manufacturing in M1.
Okay, I'm just looking for it. New combined intent statement.
Third line down at the end.
Oh, I see it, okay.
And I think fabrication should also come up, because those are light industrial activities, not the intent of this district. So my recommendation would take out light manufacturing and fabrication, and leave the rest of that paragraph the same. Planning commissioners, comments?
I don't see a harm in doing that.
And then in your table below for the permitted uses and the new terminology side, if you go down, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh one recommend removing, I think we should remove that?
Yeah, yeah.
In addition, everything that you've called industrial light, I believe, should be removed, based on my prior comment. Light industrial belongs in M1 in these districts. Out.
It's there now.
Yeah, those would, those would be out, and then do permitted uses. The only permitted uses it would have would be the first six.
They, they're, they're listed in PI now, but not IRO now, that's the-
Yeah. I just think if we're combining this, we shouldn't make it what the intent of this district is, and it's not for manufacturing, it's not for industrial. It's for research, it's for prototype headquarters.
So we have it listed in the M1?
It's listed in M1, yeah.
You guys all good with that?
I don't see. There it is. Yep, I am good with that.
So, Joe, we taking out the recommended removing and all the industrial light, Joe?
So, everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there's, there's some other recommended remove in, below that, under the special land uses too, and I, I'm, are we kind of going in the same direction on those, I assume?
Yeah, my, my recommendation is to take the, the special land use, take out the first six.
Yeah, so all the ones that say recommend removing?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then where you have at the bottom of that page, remove, covered, covered under permitted uses, yeah, take those out. You guys all good with that?
A question with these changes, and Joe, would you come back with the modified documents?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, you got, you got, you got to see it before you, like, set a public hearing on it or something.
And they would be brought back, discussed, to confirm?
Exactly.
And then a vote?
Yep.
And then page four, where it says updating M1?
Mm-hmm.
Don't make it LI1, make, keep it at M1?
Yeah, I noted that when we discussed it earlier, so thank you.
And then your current statement, instead of saying light manufacturing, say light industrial, to be consistent with the title.
Yeah, well, the current statement says light manufacturing, the one we're moving to says light industrial, yeah.
And the new statement, the very last word, it says byproducts is not anticipated? Could we make that stronger and say not allowed? So it's just, you can't have hazardous materials, waste, or byproducts at all? Not that it's just not anticipated, it's just not allowed.
Yeah, that's sentences in both definitions, or-
Yeah, we have to change it in both places, but yes, I can do that. I'm going to mark it in both places here. It's at the end of the first paragraph in the combined statement as well.
And then, that table, current permitted uses? I'm going to give a little background, and then I'm going to explain what I'd like to do. At the February Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 to allow the rezoning of the strategic business park to, from C2 to M1. At the board level, we didn't agree. We, we decided to put Mike Filbrick and myself to meet with the owner, to come up with conditions, so it'd be a conditional rezoning, not a pure rezoning of M1, which would allow anything in M1. We're very, very close. Today, we exchanged emails twice, Mike Filbrick, myself, and the, and the owner, and we're very, very close to where we're going. And what we're doing is we're eliminating some of the permitted uses, reducing building heights, we're adding screening, we're doing a lot of different things that would make it more compatible with what's currently there. So, I was going to save this for communications, I'm not going to save it, I'm going to, I'll, I'll share with you now.
Sure.
You guys did things with looking how things were zoned, and came up with the conclusion, but when the board looked at it, we looked at what was really there. So to the east is M1, but that's senior living, that's residential, and to the north is residential. And it's true that historically, that land was all zoned M1, but it's not today. Today, we have residential to the east, residential to the north, commercial to the west, industrial across the street. So we looked at it, that if you're going to put manufacturing there, you've got to have it really highly conditioned. So we had a meeting with the, with the owner, we had the party to the north that's putting up 170 units, we had in there for the first 15 minutes to share their concerns with the owner, and Mike and I believe we have something that's pretty close with restricting a lot of different things. And they still have to go through, they still have to come to us for their site plan approval. They still have to go to zoning board, there's some easement variances that they'll need to get approved, but I think we have what we need to get the amendment done, let them conditionally rezonate. So with all that, some of the things that we're doing is we're, I shouldn't say we, the developer is going to propose these conditions to us after the dialogue we get. They're eliminating some of the permitted uses. So I think it's premature for us to combine everything into industrial light and M1, because some of these things are going to be excluded, and we're referencing the document. So I think we should leave this on hold for now, until we resolve our conditional rezoning with the owner.
How long do you think that would take?
Not long, he might be at the next board, he might be at the next board, if, if things go timely. No later than the-
We, Joe, needs to make more changes anyhow.
Yeah.
That we've discussed.
Yeah, so for now, I would say, don't change these to light industrial, just leave it up for the reasons that we're working on.
Given its relative and short timeframe, it's-
Yeah, we might, a month or two at most, two months at the most. We might have this resolved this month with the owner.
Okay. Yeah, just- Okay, yeah, just keep us informed and more.
Yeah. Now, do they have to come back to the Planning Commission for that, or they go just... Because the Planning Commission voted 6-0 to approve M1. And you're just putting the condition, conditional rezoning? Yeah, the whole history on that, it's all been contractor rezoning, this will be the fifth change, fifth amendment, so... Yeah, and I would say that they've worked really well with listening to what we had to say. And some of the things that they wanted to the north, we thought would be too impeding to the developer, so... There were a lot of concessions made. I think that's it, I have there... Oh, I do have a question. What building material sales on the... It said included in retail use with warehouse character, so that means we're not gonna include building material sales, because it's already included elsewhere?
Which line are we on?
One, two, three, four.
Is it under special land use?
Fifth, from the bottom of the permitted uses for M1.
Oh, yeah, yeah, building material sales, it is included in retail use with warehouse character, so it would come out of the permitted uses and go into the special land uses.
Okay. Then, okay, under special land uses, the new terminology or use, there's a thing called contractors' yards, what does that mean?
We've seen a couple recently that are basically, that's what they are, they're contractors' yards. They're keeping their materials there, they're bringing their people on site in the morning, grabbing all their stuff and going. We don't really have a term for it right now.
Okay. I just wanted to know what... I know what you mean, though. And then the next two down from there, it says retail uses, which have a warehouse or industrial character, enclosed outdoor, but not limited to lumberyards, new building. Did the Planning Commission discuss that, and is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, well, the main thing we discussed was ending it at implement sales, because it continues on beyond implement sales in the current ordinance.
Okay.
And has that, or uses serving the convenience need, et cetera. And I think it was felt that that's just sort of, it's just a wide open door. So eliminating that, it still makes sense to allow these sort of, you know, if you have a lumber company that wants to be selling, doing direct sales of lumber, okay, this is the place for it. But all the other stuff that was listed in there is just, it's...
I like that it's a special land use, because it's gonna depend on what's there.
Sure, yeah.
Whether you take track from.
Yeah.
I'm on page six, the second table, the recommended new standards for IRO. We've agreed minimum lot width would be 150?
Yes.
And we're okay with the side setback at 25 slash total 100? Right?
Do you want to keep the total 100? I'm just noting that it's within the district, if it's adjacent to residential, it's gonna have to bump up to 75. So it's gonna be another industrial...
Would we want another line in there, side setback, residential only?
Residential setback is 75, no matter which side it's on.
Oh, got it. Okay, so it's already there.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good there. And then finally, the last one I had, just as a comment, we have a definition for industrial light. I'd say for now that we keep the industrial uses as is until we come to a final agreement with the owner of that property.
Once we, through that, we can determine whether or not this is the direction we wanna go, or if we wanna keep it as is.
Okay. That's it, Joe, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I do have just one other. I know you said, you know, M1, just to leave it M1. It kind of goes across, everything else stands for what it is, right? Everything else that are as residential.
Sort of, except M1 is technically the light manufacturing district, so...
That's my point. Is it a headache to change that? Does anybody have a big... Just to keep it consistent and stand for what it really is?
I think that's what you brought up in December, when we talked about changing.
My background is, it doesn't matter what you call them. It's how you define it.
RS, it's real suburban, that's how I...
But we have IRO, and IRO really is more than just an IRO. It's P1 too. But I'm good either way. It's not, I'm not gonna hang my hat to dry on that one.
If it's a big pain to, like you said, I thought you said it was automated, where you can search for everything that, where it says M1, just flip it to LI1?
Yeah, well, certain parts of it are automated, other things we have to do manually.
Are changes to the zoning map itself also automated?
No, no, we'd have to actually change the...
That would be a lot.
Well, I think...
Well, there's only three portions.
Yeah, I think that's up for, did we have some changes anyways on that, when we do our last map change? I think there's been a few. We're in the process of rezonings right now, so...
Yeah, whenever any rezoning actually occurs, usually we turn down rezoning, so we don't usually have to change the map. But yeah, when a rezoning does occur, we'll be changing the map anyway at that time. But you know, as far as the map is concerned, I think there are only three portions in PI, it's, it takes like three minutes to change that.
No, I'm talking about if we do change the nomenclature for M1.
Oh, you have to change the legend of the map, absolutely.
That's right, they're just color quoted.
Yeah, right.
Would there be effects outside of, excuse me, would there be effects outside of clear zoning?
No, I don't think so. I can just quickly check the code book, but I don't think we refer to districts anywhere in the code book.
Something we could give Joe a month to look into and...
Yeah, feel free to, yeah, give me a big thumbs down, Joe.
If it's a royal pain.
Yeah, I'll see how much there is. The other thing I'm looking into is whether or not combining the IRO and PI actually comprises a rezoning, or if it's essentially the same district, just with different standards and a new name. So I will be looking into that. I don't think it's going to constitute a rezoning, because it is essentially an evolution of the existing district. But if it does, then we'll have to make sure that we have a problem.
So you'll come back next month with revised?
Yes.
Okay.
I can put it more in like an ordinance format, as well as updating the memo, so that you can see what it looks like in the final version. That's always helpful for me.
Any more discussion on that one? Joe? Onto the next.
Oh, Joe. I'm just taking a quick cruise through the ordinance, looking at how many references there are to M1. There's definitely more than PI. I don't know, it's probably not gonna be that crazy if we wanna change it. Maybe 17 or 18 of them. All right, I'm good.
Okay. Onto the next.
Oh, there's nothing new on that tonight.
Let me ask you a question. This has been on, been on the Planning Commission for a number of years, and 5G has always been there.
Yes, it's definitely true.
Give me, for the rest, the history on why it has become at every meeting, we just say, is there any change? Is there any change?
And it's partly just that there's been no material change in the technology or the research surrounding it. And, you know, there's so much preemption on 5G from both the state and the federal level, that, you know, we just, you can have a moratorium on it, but you're still gonna get it, because there are places that you don't control. You know, you don't have control over your right of way, you don't have control over the fact that the cable company can put it on any of its lines, it's just, it's gonna come. It's, the whole regulatory environment has been designed that way. But, yeah, I mean, we always say there's no update, because there really isn't anything to update.
So I'm just wondering, why keep it on? We got it there...
I'll tell you why we keep it on. We keep it on, because we have a moratorium in this township that the board passed, and we don't allow. And we just want to keep it active on here, in case things...
Yeah, if the moratorium ever lapses, it ceases to be...
That's why we just keep it active on, because the board has asked.
Is there a timeline on the moratorium?
The board has asked.
I don't believe the board has established an end date for the moratorium.
There is no end date. It was put in place before the current board.
Yeah.
And we haven't changed. But like Joe says, really, it has very little meaning, because the state and the federal government have regulated, and it's not something we can regulate. It's more of a statement of concern.
So no news is good news, no news is a bad news. Okay. So let's see, is my correct in saying that takes us to IDG?
F.
F, I'm sorry, there. Agribusiness, agritourism, discussion.
So I gather that the committee met?
Yes.
And I was not in the meeting, so I guess you guys can give an update, and we can kind of figure out where we're going from there.
Our committee, Mike, Rick, and I met on March 19th. And the things we accomplished at the meeting, it was actually quite a lengthy meeting. We reviewed our goals again, to make sure that we were all on the same page. And it's, I think they're to ensure our ordinances in keeping with the times, to ensure that our ordinance is compliant with the current GAMS, and that should the commission, and ultimately the board, decide that ventures outside of the GAMS be permitted, that we are, have defined under what conditions, and when we get to that point, the applicability of our noise and light ordinances and ordinances of that nature. The next thing we did was review a chart of our existing agricultural operations that are engaged in some level of sales to the public, where the public's coming on site, both in Bruce Township and nearby areas. We kind of broke it down into what I would call traditional farms, where a farmer has crops, or is, you know, has a dairy, something like that. And then specialty farms, which could be like fruit growers, orchards, cider mills, non-food stuff, flowers, that sort of thing. Then for each of the Bruce Township agricultural operations of that sort, we looked at, to the best of our ability, what is actually occurring at each of those places right now. We kind of broke it down into what I would call incidental value-added sales and activities. That's like fine cider at an orchard.
Farm stand kind of?
Farm stand, that kind of thing, pretty basic. Then we looked at the level of farm-sponsored events and activities that are taking place. An example would be a festival or something, where they're, a weekend, where they're selling their products, and maybe having some vendors come in. Then the last area, we don't have too much of this right now, but where there are private events that are being allowed, and that are more commercial in nature, a bit disconnected from the actual agricultural operation. We then did a very high-level review of about 10 or 12 other community zoning ordinances that cover agribusiness and agritourism. And they run from basically nothing to very, very detailed, just about setting the stage for anything to happen, but with very strict limitations. So it's really quite diverse. What we identified as next steps for our little subcommittee, and to bring back to the commission at large, is to look at the activities that are taking place in Bruce Township, and identifying which of any of them are not protected by the right to farm act in the GAMS. Because those would be the ones that we would want to say, you know, what are we gonna do about these? Do we want to court this kind of stuff in the township or not? And we're also, Mike requested that we kind of do a side-by-side of our current ordinance language, with kind of some commentary off to the side, as to, you know, if there are pros and cons, or any pitfalls in terms of what we have there, again, with a view toward the RTFA and the GAMS. And Joe has been, as we, I've been kind of prepping some of this stuff, and after we met, some questions came up, which we've been sending to Joe, and he's been responsive in terms of guiding us. And, you know, there was, I think the last one was, whoa, this is kind of, it's kind of nebulous, but, you know, should it become an issue, or, you know, if we pursue it, definitely it would be something that the township authority would need to weigh in on.
You can also, M-DAR is actually remarkably responsive, too. If you ask them questions, they'll walk you through things. I just had an issue in another township.
What's that organization called?
The Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, yeah. They, there was a complaint lodged against a farm in another township, and M-DAR basically came out like a couple days after they were called, to look over the farm and say, this farm is a, an M-DAR certified farm, is operating in accordance with the GAMS, and therefore is protected from enforcement of this complaint. It was amazingly fast, given that it's a state agency, usually you expect the wheels to turn kind of slowly. But I was kind of surprised and shocked at just how accessible they are. You can more or less call their inspectors any little time, and they'll talk to you.
So I think I captured what happened at the...
You did.
So more to come.
Annual report, right?
Yes. Actually have a Word document open, so if there are any little changes to make, I can make them right here and save them.
I just noted that the first item on February 1st, 2023 was highlighted in blue for some reason.
Oh, that's an old version. We, I did send an updated version that no longer has that.
Yeah, you did.
There were some other.
Send us an updated version. Yeah, one, it was in the packet, March 22nd.
Okay.
Yeah, there were, there were a fair number of changes made.
But you're okay with it?
It was in the packet.
Mike, do you have a current?
I do not. But these, these have all the changes you guys discussed at the last meeting, correct?
Yes, yeah, I made every change that's been mentioned so far. So if there are any additional questions, comments, changes?
I think there was, Mandy had the one of substance, which was adding in the one public comment at the one meeting.
Yeah, and that was put in.
Right.
Where was that at, Mandy?
For March 1st, we, Joe added in the public comment from Alexis and Greg.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, because we had them all for the other meetings and that one got missed, so.
The rest that I had were typos or missing words.
Sure, yeah, we got all that stuff.
Right, and I have one small thing is, we should capitalize the last name of Paolo. He's in there twice. Everybody else has a first and a last name capitalized, so.
Which month is that in?
It's in February 1st. It's the first line item. And then I thought I saw his name a second time.
Oh, actually that is capital I.
Oh.
Yeah. That's his last name is Yakobah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just one of those capitals that kind of looks like a lowercase L.
Yep.
So is everybody good? I make a motion to submit the annual report to the Bruce Township Board of Trustees for information.
Second.
I roll call. Dana, when you're ready.
Voice?
Yes.
Cupid's?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Higlestein?
Yes.
So you have to have your board copy now.
Thank you.
Goals, that is the annual report. Item H, goals.
I review last year's goals.
I think all the goals are applicable. I'd like to add one. And it would be number eight. And first I give some background information. At the board level, we've discussed the history of the industrial district in our township over the years. And over the years, we, the industrial district has shrunk considerably from intentionally shrinking it many years ago. We used, it used to go from 33 mile all the way to 34 mile road. Part of our industrial district was annexed from us years ago from Romeo, where the Ford engine plant is and all that stuff up Powell Road. And within the last 20 years, we've lost, we had 33 in McKay, where the Strategic Business Park is, that piece that you guys reviewed last month, that was all industrial at one point in time. So we've, in, in order to have a healthy township, you need a good balance of residential to industrial, and we don't think that we have that balance today. So what I'd like to add as a, as a goal for us is to review the master plan in light of the township's historical shrinkage of the industrial corridor over time and adding more industrial areas.
So when you say us, you're talking about this was discussed at the board?
Yeah, we did, we, we're looking to the planning commission to look at the master plan and maybe look at some of the areas that we might want to put some industrial, add some industrial back to our township. Because we're, we're running out of some of this, you know, our industrial district is starting to, to fill up, which is good, but we, I think we need some industrial.
Do you describe the mechanism for that? Do we open up the master plan or how does that?
I was going to ask Joe what would be the right protocol to do that.
So I think what we could do perhaps as a step one is a, a master plan review where I can provide some questions that we can ask ourselves about our current master plan and how relevant it is to the current situation in the township. And that gives us an idea of whether there are any other topic areas that we might want to think about. If the answer to that is no, then I think we would take the township board at its word that there should be some review of the footprint of industrial property in the township, at which point, you know, you would initiate a, an update to your master plan, and we would do some concentrated study on that one issue. If there are other issues, then we could do study on all those issues. But I think that at that point, you're in a formal master plan process. You have to send your notice of intent to plan and all that, and, and ultimately it culminates in a public hearing. Mike, you might be the only one who was on the board. Maybe you add, when we did our last master plan, we did a very small amendment to our master plan.
Yeah, I don't recall much.
Yeah, it was, it was just to, to match up the borders of the water and sewer districts. I don't recall what year that was. It was a while ago now. So a master plan update, yeah, it might be, yeah. A master plan update can be very small. It doesn't necessarily have to be a massive.
The last time we did a major revision was 2016.
Yes, that's correct.
And then it's 2021.
20 or 21, something like that, yeah.
We did just minor changes because we reaffirmed.
Yes, exactly.
Essentially. I think we should revisit.
Sure. I can definitely provide you a guide to reviewing your existing master plan, and then we can determine kind of what we think the scope of any necessary update is.
Thank you. And then number, under the other support and recommendations of the board, page two, number four, my question to Dana is, have we done this or do we still need to do this? It was the checklist and processes.
This is, is something that I, I just learned more about in my training. So I would like to maybe come back at the next meeting. When are we going to?
I was just asked, do we, do we keep this in or do we take it out? That's my question to you, if you think we keep it in. I think we keep it in.
Yeah, let's keep it in.
Okay. So the only thing I would do is add number eight that I described. Good, I think we should. You want to? Yeah, why don't we add number nine? The planning commission to continue to look at agritourism in light of our current ordinances.
Are we good with those?
I'd make a motion to, I'd make a motion to submit to the board the planning commission goals for 2024, or April 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2025, as, as modified from the 2023 goals. And then if we're good with that, then, then Dana, you could update it, the title and everything, if you don't mind. And then include in the board pack.
Motion by Mike Tremblay, I'll, I'll second the motion. I think we can do an acclamation.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, Kent?
We're going to do an acclamation.
Oh, okay.
All in favor of the proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. So we're on to EC goals here.
We're on the bylaws.
Bylaws.
I'm sorry. Bylaws change to reflect new meeting start time. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Change the meeting start time to 6:00 PM, same day as usual. Need support?
A second.
Mandy, you support that?
Yes.
Okay, you got it. Can we do an acclamation on any objection to it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, discussion to have site plan approval expiration date extended in ordinance 161 187. What's the background on that?
So you won't have a memo in your packet on this one. This is kind of like a lead addition to the agenda. It was kind of related to the first things we did with the extension of those site plan approvals. But the, I've taken a look at the sections that are relevant to this, and the basic thing is that right now a site plan is valid for a year from approval. That's the most common validity period that you'll find in zoning ordinances around the state of Michigan. I work in a couple of communities that have two years. Armington Hills is one of them. Their site plans are valid for two years. There is also the matter of what happens after a site plan gets approved. So we approve a site plan at the planning commission. And for most site plans, the next step isn't building permits, it's going through engineering review. And engineering review can be involved and it can take a while. And sometimes that can push the timeframe past a year. So there's, there's a couple of things to think about here. One is we can, we can lengthen the validity period of an approved site plan. Push it from one year to two. That would probably eliminate all but the most extreme outliers of engineering review taking a while. You know, and a big part of that is that there are a lot of standards to meet in engineering review, and you have to have all the information there, all the i's have to be dotted and all the t's have to be crossed. And the most common thing that happens in engineering review is that the first set of the plans doesn't cross a lot of the t's and dot a lot of the i's. So there's back and forth, and there's delay every time there's back and forth, because there has to be intake on the reviewing engineer's side, and then they've got to get their review turned around. And then if they're asking for more information, the applicant's side has to then turn around that information, and sometimes that can take a while. Plus, there might be other approvals going on, drain commission, road commission, Eagle, other agencies that are getting involved. So one thing to think about is what actually, like, what do we actually mean by, you know, a site plan approval, you know, being valid for a year? Because I do work in communities where their basic premise, as far as how they consider site plan validity, is that if you're diligently working toward completion, they're probably not going to call your site plan expired. So you could even insert language into your ordinance to that effect, that you are, you know, as long as you're engaged in the engineering review process, like, you might not necessarily, your site plan might not necessarily expire. You know, that's, that's sort of a policy decision that some communities have made. You know, the plain language of the ordinance says it's valid from a year after approval. So, you know, if you're going to enforce your ordinance, that's what you got to do. You got to consider it expired after a year. But there are communities that kind of take a little bit more of a, is this advancing approach to determining whether something is expired or not? So, you know, we could potentially look at having some language in there that, you know, is more similar to what we've got for the subdivisions and. Maybe even kind of get, yeah, for condos, exactly. Maybe even get a little more detailed about the process, you know? If you get, when you get your, your site plan review, you have X amount of time to proceed to the next stage. If the next stage is building permits, because all you're doing is a facade or something, well, okay, then you have a year to proceed to your building permits. If you've got to do engineering review, you have, you know, six months or a year or whatever to get into the engineering review process. Once you've received that approval under our condo processes, you have six months from engineering approval to come in for your final approval. You can have a similar thing in your site plan approval, where once you're, you get your engineering approval, then you've got six months to come and file your building permits or something like that. We could do a multi-stage thing where it's not simply a one year from, from the moment you get approved. And I could even, I could even kind of outline both approaches in a memo for the next meeting. It wouldn't be a problem. So you can kind of compare them side by side and see what you prefer.
Personal preference? We have a very small planning department. I, my preference would be to keep it simple.
Sure, two years.
Two years, and, and Mike's had some discussion with me on this. Mike and I chat every once in a while.
Sure.
And he's our planning and zoning administrator. And he said, Mike, he says the practical thing is that engineering reviews are, are taking longer than they have in the past, and it's not practical to keep it a year.
Sure.
So my preference would be just make it two years. And then as a practice, 60 days before the two years is, send a note to the developer. When I was here before, we've been, since economic bad times, we would have developers come in and actually ask, can you reaffirm my site plan for another year? We have never denied anybody if they had a legitimate reason. I think here, if we go for two years, that's a longer period of time. They have to have a very, very good reason to extend.
Sure.
But I would, I would prefer to keep it simple personally, just because I know how much, we have a very small staff here. And our, and Mike is also planning zoning administrator, he's also our code enforcement, so he's probably the hardest working guy in the township. I don't, I don't want to make it more complicated for him. We only have to code enforcement.
So are you saying that?
So, but my recommendation, pardon me?
I was going to ask a question. So are you saying because of our inability to keep pace? So are you saying because of our inability to keep pace, that's been the cause of?
Not, not our ability. It's engineering reviews have been taking longer. Because of the back.
Done by?
Engineering reviews are done by engineering firms.
Oh, the firms.
They're done, and then they, the developer will have an engineering review, it'll come to our engineer to review. And there's a back and forth exchange, like, hey, this is not done right, or this, I'd like to see this changed. And that's been taking longer, they've been more complicated. And some example was the 170 units over there on Strategic Business Park. Very long. And some of these others.
Esco, Esco Roofing.
Esco Roofing, yeah. I mean, Mike is, Mike, from a practical standpoint, says one year doesn't work anymore.
Sure.
I trust the guy. He's never lied to me, so.
What do you think about it?
So I would, I would say for 187, change the one year to two years. And then number four, on 161, 61E4, change it to two years and then complete it within three years. Are you doing that as a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Can we do that one?
It's just basically an instruction, we put something together, so, yeah. It's not a.
That would have to come back as a.
Yeah, and then we'll set it.
So it's an instruction for you.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm basically asking Joe to do it, you're seconding. And we can do that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business?
Yeah, poultry.
I'm sorry?
Poultry.
Poultry.
By poultry, do you mean chickens?
Chickens. Oh, that one was added. Very front. Can I make a suggestion to let people read this and come back at the next meeting and have some good dialogue on it?
That's the poultry.
Yes.
I have a question regarding that. What prompted this?
Complaints.
From?
Residents. I've received two myself.
About people having chickens?
Having chickens. We don't have, we don't have anyone, Mrs. Kins. We have very little with respect to governing chickens in our town.
Okay, was there a complaint regarding, we want chickens and we don't know how?
No, we have, we have chickens out there and they're a nuisance. That's what we.
That's what prompted?
That's, that's what I've gotten, that's what Philbrook's gotten. I think that's what you've got.
I mostly get questions about, and my advice is always, you know, roosters, not so much. But I understand that the ones that are contained, or that are allowed, or that are in small communities would be problems. But yeah, Mike gets the.
Has there ever been, is there a specific ordinance pertaining to poultry today?
No, the closest we have is farm animals.
Yes. And in, in the farm animal, does it specifically mention any particular type of animal?
It mentions.
Horses, cows, sheep, swine, and other animals.
Is that this, the section 3.16.0, that's our current?
No, that one was provided.
You have one in your, yeah.
That's something that she.
I don't know if it's violation.
Like a suggestion?
And then one that I provided, which is something that I was both curious to see what, what other communities in Michigan have, and one said, that's the other one that you have. And it ranges from strictly none to, you know, quite detailed, you know, the number, the size lot that you have, you know, like I said, you can see in there just the wide range of approaches to how to handle.
Has there ever been a township official that has modified that particular ordinance that you gave to me to allow chickens somewhere?
I think I know what you're, you're talking about.
You know where I'm going.
There, there was a note that they are allowed just by omission, that they're not addressed in our ordinance. And the note is allowed because, let's see, chickens, ducks, all fowl, we have really no, no coverage in our ordinance of fowl.
If you look up the definition of a chicken, I think you will find it saying it's a farm animal. And a farm animal is restricted.
Well, yeah, there's some people that disagree, but that a farm animal, that ducks and chickens, although found on farms.
Look in the dictionary.
Is the complaints, that have the complaints that were received, do they deal with chickens on residential properties?
I was going to ask if there's a geographic profile to the areas where we're getting complaints.
Right.
Are there smaller lots?
I know two complaints, one is in a residential area and one is, I'm not sure how it's owned, it's up M-53, 36 mile long, just north of 36 on the left-hand side. If you go down, you'll see there's.
That would be RS.
It might be RS, yeah. But people have called complaining about both of those locations. They called me.
That there are some present?
There are areas where the people view it as a nuisance, so I think we should just look at our ordinance and see what we can do to, to address them. But not today.
We, we had one in our neighborhood.
Yep.
That came to the resident, the homeowner's, and it was overwhelmingly turned down.
You could have homeowner's rules to say no.
Yeah, the HOA can have that. So.
One of them came from your neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember.
So more to come.
Like I said, I, I have little that I can say. I know you're, you're with the.
And Joe, any ideas you have there?
Yeah, I can maybe do a little bit of research. I know I work for a couple of communities that have some chicken regulations and things, so, a couple of which have very small lots.
Yeah, and some of it's kind of in areas where it's, you know, small lots, or, you know, and let us say again, you can see some, some places just outlawed roosters altogether, or, you know.
There's a big difference between living next to a rooster and living next to a chicken.
Chickens attract other animals.
So they do.
Okay. I guess I'm done. See, what I was gonna say. Okay, item 11?
Well, unless there's other new business.
Twelve. Twelve. Comments from committees and consultants? Joe, I'll ask you, you have any additional comments?
Just a very quick note to note that I went to the Michigan Municipal League's Capitol Conference a couple of weeks ago, and there was a very enlightening presentation on solar energy, specifically with regard to the recently passed legislation that, it generally gets referred to as preemptive legislation for utility scale solar energy installations. One of the main takeaways from it was that about 95% of what's in our ordinance is perfectly valid, even when this law goes into effect, because the systems that are affected by this law are so large that they just, it just, it goes right over the top of most of our ordinance covers. There, when you get over a certain threshold in terms of the power output of these systems, that's when the state might become involved. Now, there's a little bit of a complex system where a lot of these, you know, solar arrays will be in multiple jurisdictions, because they can't get enough land in one jurisdiction to put the whole thing in a single municipality. As far as the utility scale systems are concerned, you can have a local ordinance that, the term that the MSU Extension presenter used was a compatible local ordinance, so a local ordinance that is not in conflict with the state regulations. And that is to the advantage of an installer who, who wants to come in and do a system, because they can work with you directly via your ordinance, and they can get through the process a lot quicker. It's gonna take them over a year to go through the state commission to do any of these projects. It's a long process. If they're going through a local ordinance, even if your ordinance is a little more restrictive than the state, they will probably be willing to work with you, because the timeframes are much, much, much shorter working with the local government. The thing is, if they want to do a multi-jurisdictional project, every one of those jurisdictions has to have an ordinance, otherwise it automatically gets kicked to the state. So the commission is in the middle of its rulemaking process right now. This law doesn't actually take effect until November. So sometime over the summer, the draft rules are expected to come out. I am following the MSU Extension expert on this, so as soon as she issues some, you know, opinions and new guidance on this, I will bring that to you and let you know what's up. But let's just put it this way, it's being monitored, and it's not the wholesale overriding of local ordinances that it initially appeared to be. If we do wind up in a situation where we have all or a portion of a utility scale system, and I don't recall what the kilowatt hours are offhand, but it's a large, large system, then, you know, it becomes a little more relevant to us. But for most of what's going to occur on a day-to-day basis or on a site-to-site basis, our existing regulations still apply. And that was it, that's all I had.
Looks like we're on item 14?
13.
Oh, comments from the commissions.
I just have a couple. One is, I already talked about our industrial corridor. And the last one I want to do is just share the topics of discussion that we had with Strategic Business Park, just for learning opportunity for the planning commission. When we were talking about conditionally zoning that piece of property, they wanted change to M1. We put limiting, limiting or eliminating all outside storage. They proposed eliminating. Limiting permitted uses, they're limiting some of the uses. Screening landscaping or decorative walls on the areas that border the residential areas, they've agreed to all that. Bay doors on the storage facility, remember they had storage facilities there? All the doors would be to the interior, not to be exposed to the residential areas. Including a conceptual site plan that they would materially conform to, and if they don't materially conform to, that's not part of it. Limiting the height of the buildings. Right now, a building is 40, they've, they propose going to 30. And then lighting and noise, they're gonna comply with those. And that was it. And he's proposed conditions for all of those items that we discussed. And when it's done, we'll probably break what the conditions, final conditions are on board for a week. That's it.
Item 14? Motion to adjourn.
May I ask?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you.
I guess it's a question for you, Dana. This was back, I think it was the November meeting. It involved the Muir property at the fair where Van Dyke intersects the expressway, and it was presented by Dan Walker, and at that, he was requesting the rezoning from O-1 to C-3. And he asked for, for us to table it, so I believe he could work on his impact statement and traffic study, I think. And we said, fine. We extended it till the February meeting. Is that, where is that?
This is the, oh, that other site at the corner there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We gave him, he didn't, he said he wasn't aware that he needed to do an impact statement. And so we granted him.
Right.
An additional, additional two months to do that, and I never heard anything back.
You take a look at the ministry, Dana, if that's true, we should bring it to the next meeting for sure and notify him that it's gonna be.
Yeah, or at least have them formally withdraw it or something, you know?
Yeah, because that was a subject, I would think, regardless of the impact statement, that we had probably a couple dozen people in here quite concerned.
All right, I'm trying to remember what, what came of the, of any other extension. Wasn't anything mentioned at our, at our February meeting?
No, it was not brought up.
All about that? All right, let me check into it, and I'll, I'll get back with you tomorrow. It doesn't have to be that yet.
You know, I've just, you know, as whoever suggested, maybe it, we need to have it on the agenda and make a decision.
Yeah, and it is possible that it's simply a dead issue at this point, they're, they just haven't formally withdrawn. So, but either way, we should get an official conclusion.
As a courtesy to the petition, reach out whether we have to.
Yeah, see, there's, that's the Muir Walker, and then Walker's got the, the other 20 also are rezoning, so, yeah, do you have anything else to talk about, because I can remember my office and.
I think he was moving on to the motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.